But that's why I chose to move here. But I would tell you, it is exceptionally difficult to get, speaking from my own perspective, African-American professionals to move here. I try to get many of them to move to the North Side. We have great houses. I think we have a great community. We have great people. And the people are what makes the North Side great. No matter what, we'll talk about amenities, we can talk about all these things as long as we want. The people here is what makes the North Side great. But the issue is that people don't want to live here for three reasons. Young professionals don't want to live here because, one, they deal with the issues of crime, the perception is crime. Two, there's nowhere to eat, nowhere to shop. That's the perception. People tell me about this, no amenities. And the third thing is, people say, "I don't know when it's ever gonna change." So, what you really need, and I hate to bring this all back again, one night and say it's too... I want to bring this back to the issue of economic development, because that's what it's gonna take. Until you start seeing concentric circles of development in certain areas, whether it be near the waterfront, or the river, or whether it be on Hen and West Broadway, whether it be on Glenwood. I mean, for good mistakes, we're in a community right now that has the most potential, I think, of anywhere in the entire city. And yet, nothing's happened! And so, what you need is development. You need people to... You need the city councilman to push for things to happen. And once those things happen, I would guarantee you, people will be moving to our city. And I think pioneers like all of us who are here now will have great homes and great property values. And if you are near that area of retirement, you will have a very nice time to manage. That's what I want to do for people here. I want to make sure that this neighborhood improves to attract more and more people, because that's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
It's about coming alive again. This is the opportunity that we've been waiting for. The people of Minneapolis, the region, has been talking about the issue of equity and equality and justice. It is the opportunity to build on, almost a blank canvas. Our core wars are available for that development. Long Lawrie, Glenwood, Plymouth, and Broadway. We have the money. We have... Can you hear me now? Turn it to me tonight. We have the money. We have the ability to be able to pull it together. But now, do we have the absolute will to get this thing done? One of the major things, and we're at general, we have had conversations about the media and how they depict the Annes, North Annes. When something goes wrong, it's North Annes. But when something goes right, it's just Minneapolis. Well, that ain't right now. It's signaling out one part of town, just because something wrong goes on. It's time to start standing up again. And this is the reason why we say "no," Kail. We say "no" because we're sick and tired of being sick and tired. We're sick and tired of hearing about how things are bad in our neighborhood when we know ninety-five percent of the days are going to work. We do alright, but now it's time to do better. The investment has to start to come into this area. Because guess what? There's nowhere else to go. The ability to develop. And we've talked about why a lot of people don't move into this area. But it's real simple. They have to believe, as we need to believe, and to teach people that North Minneapolis is that place where you can come. We are at the cusp, ladies and gentlemen. We are... Everything that's happening around us, but now it's time to make something happen inside of this area. So, here's the bill. I'll be able to get seven votes on the city council. You know why? Because I worked with them long enough to start moving the agenda. It's gonna be an agenda that's gonna make sure that this is going to be the most desirable place to live. But for the people first who are here, all thirty thousand of us are currently here in this area inviting new people coming in. Because with the increased density, with the increased amenities, and with the increased connection to the rest of the region, we will be that star of the north. And I'm gonna get seven votes every time I need to get something done here.
Hey folks, you heard from Brett Buckner, put it on the calendar. He gets elected, he says he's gonna get seven votes. He said it now. Now, I need you to hold him accountable to it. Because our current councilmember, he gets to do what he wants, and he does what he wants, and he does nothing. Okay? So, you heard Brett say it. He said he'd get seven votes. So, when he gets seven votes to move the sex offenders off the North Side, you better get three seven votes, because I'm holding you accountable to it, Brett. And you know me, I hold more people accountable than you believe. Okay? So, here, I... You know what? I'm gonna give it to you guys real again. You know, I'm not mad, I'm just passionate. You need to understand my passion. I'll tell you how we're gonna track black folks back to the North Side. How about police accountability? How about when the police actually murder or kill somebody, they're basically held accountable for it? Okay? How about that? So, I'll give you guys an example. Let's imagine a twenty-three-year-old professional that works at General Mills. Let's imagine he's running around the golf course, uh, need a worker right now. Do you think the police officer just drive by and invests in the black guy working out? Do you really think that the police officer just thinks he's out there working out? Or do they think maybe he's running because he took something, or that he did something? Hey, you know what? Honesty is the best policy of my words. Okay? The second thing is, is how do we hold these police accounts for our kids? I work with kids every single day. When I see the police approach them outside of school, I pray and I get a little scared. I get a little scared, because I don't... You know, they're great kids. And just because they're a couple doesn't mean they're bad. Alright, I see this assets here. That's why I need the police to see them. And I'm holding police accountable. Remember, I'm not part of the DFL, I'm not taking money from the DFL unions, including the police union. How about we have better public schools? How about someone like myself that led the initiative to keep North High open? If we have a place for your kid to go to school that's in your community, now guess what we have? We're possibly gonna have a middle school back in North Minneapolis State. Guess what? You're kicking off a school day in state in the future. That's what we can do. Last but not least, how about political accountability? How about these folks that are, you know, just sitting there saying, "We're gonna do this, and we're gonna make sure that we get rid of these sex offenders." And I have seven people to support me. What if the seven people don't get elected? Have you been talking to the people that are... Everyone's up for reelection. What if they don't get elected? So, here's my deal, folks. I'm gonna play for you, and I'm gonna root for you every single time. This is how I'm gonna talk on the city council when I get up here. And Barb Johnson will get me crazy, but she's gonna have to deal with you. Okay? So, we can do this together, but I need your support. We can get families back by holding people accountable, that's what we can do.
Mr. Brown.
I'm gonna go back a little bit, and it's fair to blame here. Kail talks about me having a law license and not suing all these folks and all that stuff. I'm gonna tell you, my law license has been made for Kail to come and become my client for this issue. And what have you been doing, sitting on your ass too? I mean, come on, no, at the end of the day... Look, we're gonna do what we can to make this place a better place. And we're all up here trying to find answers, questions that are out there. And, you know, the other thing that makes me just kinda think that Kail's a little bit light on this sex offender issue is this. He wants all these regulations and zoning issues where you can locate sex offenders one mile away from schools and parks and all that stuff. Guess what Miami and Florida did? They did exactly the same thing. And you know what? They created sanctuary towns in Miami and Florida. So, that's not gonna work very well. And so, that just seems a little bit light, Kail, but to address the issue here, young professionals should and need to move to North Minneapolis to make this place a better place. This is a great place to live, because the most important thing is affordable. It's affordable for young people who are making the thirty to fifty thousand dollars a year type salaries to live here. You can live on a modest income here and have all the amenities that might be good for you, including being close to downtown. I'm talking like a real estate agent right now, because we have great housing stock up here in North Minneapolis that anybody could pick up. Elbow grease, sweat equity on you, and build great houses. I live on a house on Twenty-Seven and Logan. It is a beautiful house that needed some sweat equity. My wife and I put that on the house. It is a beautiful earth-craft bungalow with hardwood floors and everything. And that's what we have on the North Side, yes, is waiting for good owners and young professionals to get in on it. The reputation here at North Minneapolis is completely undeserved. We deserve more in North Minneapolis. You know, a lot of the lines of law we're talking about, our police needs to be better. They need to serve with more compassion, so that the people who live here can have faith in it. That the people who live here can tell good stories about North Minneapolis to everybody. Because this is a great place to live. And once we get the bottom light bulb right on, once we get Buzz Rappaport's hands in here, once we get a lot of different things here, it's gonna be an even greater place to live. But at the heart of it is just this. We need to put amenities here, so that we can go to gas stations at one o'clock in the morning, so that we can get a donut at 1:00 P.M. in the afternoon. Those sorts of simple things we laugh about, but those sorts of things are amazing for people. And the last thing is, we need to make our schools in North Minneapolis great schools again, so that people can locate their families here. Thank you.
Buckner, would you draw the next question? Community health and green living? Question number thirteen. What is your plan for working with the community in Minneapolis? Public health department, private sector, city staff, and the county to reduce health disparities, particularly among people of color in North Minneapolis? In the interest of time, can we have two minutes, Mr. Tarkiewicz, for the answer to the question? Thank you.
Just had a good conversation this week with Gretchen Musikant, who was our director for health. We sat down and talked about the coordination of what takes place. One, health department, like any other department in the city of Minneapolis, is woefully underfunding to do the work. But they've done some amazing activities in partnership with their county partners, their private organizations, and the community organizations across the community. I think what we have to do is, one, we have this great thing that everybody's gonna be covered, or at least we're gonna try to get everybody covered over the next couple of months through the Affordable Care Act, or Obamacare. But we have to promote it. We have to get people engaged across the board and working with the city, working with our local organizations. We have to also promote the idea that health is the most critical piece. I know this pretty clearly, because I saw this within my mother. She worked hard. She made a living. She took care of me and several other things, but her health continued to deteriorate. One, because of just the fact that we didn't do the job that I've seen given her... Um, just... We did not connect her to our city entities, our county entities. We did not make sure that those checks were taken place on a regular basis until it was too late. We're gonna stop saying it's too late and start to reach out quicker and say, "This is how we're gonna be healthy. We create sustainable communities." That's what the public boards, as well as county entities. We're not creating stable communities. That means strong economies. Those are the things that tie entities. But I know that we're really gonna do it, because we got a coalition at the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Buckner.
Long... With all due respect to my voters, I won't use the words used, but get off my butt. I think you should check my record, or maybe you should Google me and see the work that I've done. And I'll start with the fact that I did sexually transmitted infection in teenage pregnancy prevention right here in this building. Right here, my office is to be located outside them doors. Okay? It's a epidemic that we've been dealing with in North Minneapolis. What I'd like to deal with, but I'm not, that's our reality. We have a wonderful place here called North Point Health and Wellness Center, formerly the Potter City. You're looking at a Potter City baby, I'm a Gary Cuddy. I grew up under that man for about eight years at North Point. I was a student at North High School. We used to do all kinds of programming over there. That is our avenue right there to make our community better. Okay? That's the place where we need to get the dollars ran to, because they actually do the work, and they have a proven track record of doing the work. Not only do they got a proven track record of doing the work, they have great relationships with political folks. So, you know, when you got that relationship with political folks, you can keep that money coming in. Alright? So, they have a broad range of stuff they do for even smoking prevention, diabetes prevention, a production. They're doing all kinds of things at North Point. But the fact of the matter, what they're doing is education. And that's what we have to do with our people. And more than anything, we gotta do it with our younger folks. I'm teaching my kids every single day about the health risks that they take. Did you guys know that North High School has a clinic located inside of the school? It's actually, it was a clinic that was founded in the seventies. So, we have a clinic there that we try to educate our kids with every single day. They can get glasses there, they can have online education, we can get prescriptions there, they can get sports physicals. So, we're doing some of the work, and here's the proof that we're doing it. Alright? We need to keep the dollars rolling through places. Bring our clinics another place, even though that's in the fourth ward. They do a lot of work with our seniors that live in the fifth. So, we gotta keep the dollars rolling through these organizations. And we gotta get the word out, and we gotta educate our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Seagull. Mr. Long.
First and foremost, in this situation, we have to do a community assessment of what the health disparities are. And if we do have the studies about it, we really need to gather the information and have a conversation with the community. And what that means is that we have a conversation with English speakers. We have a conversation with people who don't speak English and speak other languages, to really see what their issues are, and to get at what they really want from the city, the county, the state, in terms of taking care of these health disparities. Because I think most people know that whenever we have new issues, the best place to start is to start with the people who actually are suffering from those issues. And once you kind of understand what's going on, then at that point, we have community resources here in North Minneapolis that can help. We have HCMC that's not too far away from where we're here. We have North Point, which is a great asset. It's a federally qualified health center that provides quality healthcare and low costs, sliding costs for a lot of different people here. And we need to use that a lot more. They have this program that Kail was part of, called the Community Health Workers. And these folks go out to the community to educate people on these specific issues, whether it be diabetes, or asthma, any other issues like that. And we need to use them and work with them to really push the issue. But at the heart of it is government, whether it's the city or the county, has a lot of resources that they can help in terms of pushing these issues to the forefront and making these issues priorities, so that we can tackle them and eliminate them. And I think that's really the job of government, is to help a small-scale problem become much more of a big problem for everyone to understand and tackle together. If we tackle this issue together, we will be much better able to solve these issues. So, thank you.
First, I'd just like to say that I have no desire to get into an argument with Long or Kail. I actually just wanted to say that, you know, the cause of health disparities is either... They're multifaceted. They include the environment's access to healthcare, access to affordable health. The three issues I really strongly like to work on, you know, access to the overall environment, which, again, I'm a big... I really believe that people should read Sierra's lecture report on the work. It's startling when you read it. The second thing is, access to healthcare, I think Long made a good point. We have a great... We have great medical facilities on the North Side. I think people need to be educated more about those. But you know, what's interesting to me is, and I don't know about everyone else here, I haven't been allowed to do this, but you know, there's only one song I can think of that sums up the issue of food disparage, or food desert, or else the issue of bad choices. Unfortunately, it's like my favorite song, it's by a North Side group. And of course, everybody knows what that is. It's the Hot Chiros Ataki song. Everyone's heard that song, it's on the internet, and had a two-and-a-half million YouTube hits. It's a great song, but of course, it's glorified in Hot Chiros Atakis, which are probably the worst of anything you possibly can. But my point is, is that I think as a city council member, pushing for healthy living also is going to be pushing for better health options. Right now, on the North Side, we don't have very many options. We have all things in cups, or two large shots. Other than that, the corner stores that charge way too much provide old, outdated stale food, and food is generally high-quality.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Seagull, would you draw the next question? Economic development and economic justice, question number four. Historically, North Minneapolis, including the neighborhoods of near-north, southern Glenwood, Harrison, parts of the North Loop, have been officially and culturally identified as the slums, the Negro area, as simply a bad place to live. Now, years later, North Minneapolis, particularly south of Dowling and above Glenwood, are still painted as less than and socially undesirable, although nothing to be further from the truth. Similar socioeconomic neighborhoods in South Minneapolis, such as Phillips, Eastern West, and Ventura Village, better services, shopping access to a broad range of choices. There's a lot of left service given to the North Side, and not much of action. A, as an elected official, how will you use your office to level out the playing field? B, what will you do differently than your predecessors to bring equity to the North Side? And C, please be specific in the discussion regarding funding, infrastructure, and actual real estate development on grocery stores, small business development, and capacity building, et cetera. Time you will look at it in three minutes, Mr. Tarkiewicz.
Oh, thank you so much, I appreciate that. I was like, how am I gonna answer this? Alright, here we go. Um, so first, I gotta start off by saying I'm trying to give examples of what I've done on 4:00 AM. So, when we talk about equity, um, I work with Lieutenant Johnson. I may even call her two names that were very inappropriate, but I had to get my point across when we're talking about equity in North Minneapolis. I love, me and Lieutenant, we're on the same page now, we're gonna do it. Alright? So, the thing that I think needs to happen more than anything is our major corridor, and your major street, is Broadway. Broadway is... That's what it's a base with, alright? But the problem about Broadway Avenue, it seems like two people own all the Broadway, and they're only willing to rent it to you, and they're not willing to rent it to you the way you want it to be rented. Alright? So, usually, when you come into a place and you wanna rent it, you have to tell them the design you want, you want it set up this way, but that's not how they do business here. Um, so, we gotta somehow encourage these folks who own these businesses to rent it to us, you folks, so we can open up the businesses. Or we gotta find a way to purchase them. So, we gotta find some kind of incentive, so the folks that live in the community can purchase them. What I wanna see in our community is entrepreneurs like yourselves in this moment here, open the businesses on Broadway. I don't think a big box store is exactly what we need in North Minneapolis. Um, I think, you know, I'd love to see a few more shoe stores owned by our folks in our community. I'd love to see a few grocery stores. Uh, you know, I'd love to see these kind of things. Uh, I was on North Talk the other day, and someone said, "We really need to be enjoying a Broadway." You know, if you've got the money to do it, let's do it. But the way I see it is not big box stores, but small mom-and-pop stores that can hire the kids, the people in our community to be successful.
In the next thirty years... I'm too loud. In the next thirty years, Minneapolis's downtown is gonna get an influx of about $1 billion to build a park and to build a stadium down there. Give us that money here on West Broadway, North Minneapolis, and let's develop it that way. That's how the funds should be coming. Now, if we're gonna tax, if we're gonna create a stadium, and a park, and a parking lot, my goodness, let's do it up here. Let's have the global world to make it happen up here. First and foremost, that's the most important thing that I think should be happening right now, is that people all talk about how where North Minneapolis goes, so goes the stadium. The mayor or candidates have said the same thing. And I would just say, you know, put your money where your mouth is, and naturally, raise those funds to put a billion dollars into North Minneapolis in the next thirty years, and imagine how big it would be. The second thing is just this. If we are gonna wait for the big boxers to come and save us here in North Minneapolis, good luck, because it has to happen. Prime example was Target Corporation, with the Target network was on West Broadway. They failed. And if we're gonna wait for that, good luck, it's not gonna happen. And what I believe that is gonna help, this thing about scare in North Minneapolis, is this. We need to recruit small businesses to locate here in North Minneapolis, and to create the jobs that are here in North Minneapolis, and to employ the people who live here in North Minneapolis. You know, people are scared of the word subsidy, but here's what I'm gonna say about that. If we're willing to give subsidies to a billion-dollar football team, we should give subsidies to the small mom-and-pops that actually make this place a good place to live. And here's what you see on Lowry Avenue, West Broadway, Glenwood, any of these commercial corridors. Mom-and-pop shops who put up their life savings and pray every day that they make it. If governments were to help those folks, we would be okay. You look at University Avenue, Edblad Avenue, Central Avenue, a lot of those businesses, minority businesses, Broadwood Avenue, up by their shoestring, student on their own. And if governments had helped those situations, my goodness, we would be in such a better place. And West Broadway needs that, Pickup needs that, all the personal quarters in North Minneapolis need that. But the economic engine for North Minneapolis, I believe, is small businesses. And they need the help of our local government. Make it easier. Give project management to these businesses to make it much easier to navigate the government system, and we'll see change here.
Thank you, Mr. Dan.
Okay, I'm gonna try to answer this in three minutes. What nails the North Side economically? Government, okay. Well, actually, I just wanted to start by saying, I wrote my graduate school paper on North Minneapolis, particularly on West Broadway, economic development. And one of the things that was interesting is I did find a map that showed Jewish slum, workmen's area, you know, immigrant slum. I mean, the city did delineate districts for certain people to live in. It's very apparent they did that. I would argue, actually, the city, unlike other places in the country where those areas are just assumed to be located there, the city actually came up with a whole plan to keep people in certain areas. So, the city's history's been not the best on that issue. But, you know, the reality is that we need to change the perception of the North Side. I mean, that's really what you're gonna do, as elected official, how will you use your office to level out the playing field? You're gonna have to change the perception. You're gonna have to change the perception by, when I asked the question at the beginning, you know, "What do you think of North Minneapolis?" We need to change that perception to people thinking, "Oh, North Minneapolis is a place I can start my business. North Minneapolis is a place that I can grow my business." The small mom-and-pop stores can thrive. That's what we need to change the perception. And right now, to talk about, I think the second question is, what will you do differently than your predecessors? Well, Don, Don's main focus, and Don's name is our current city councilman, has been on crime. And my father's also from the Caribou, so I'll tell you, the thriving safety is a big thing. But my, you know, there's gonna be, potentially, there's gonna be seven members of the city council this next term. And all being, if either of us will be elected, no matter who of us it is, we will be the oldest members of those seven if they all are elected. So, I will be thirty-six, and then, actually, no, I think I'm wrong. Kail, you'll still be, you'll be the youngest member. But my point, though, is that if I were elected, I would like to be potentially on the zoning planning. Because one of the biggest issues we have on the North Side is that a lot of these buildings don't meet certain regulations to build, to fix. And so, as a result, the city would rather tear them down and fix them up. And then, also, one of the things I just wanted to say is, one of the best development opportunities, and I don't think we're really in time to go into it, except thirty seconds left, is the funding opportunities on Labor Flower, West Broadway, Plymouth, Golden Valley Road, and Glenwood, is through the EBI investment. And getting more money to invest in the city of Minneapolis. We have the capacity now in the state to do these things, and I think we should be working it. And before I run out of time, I just wanna say that I look at the North Side, and I just see, I don't see the problems of the North Side. We all know we're the champions. I see incredible opportunities, and I'd like to work on those opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Brown.
I'm gonna take the second question first, for what I do differently than my predecessors. I'm willing to act. I'm going to activate. I'm going to bring our city council members together and say, this is ground zero for equity. This is our major charge, right here. We solved this issue in North Minneapolis and we have a city in Minneapolis. Now we get to hurt us in major activity. We have fifty-six million dollars. We have the ability to remake a community. It's time to act. I didn't wait to run against anyone else. I had to raise my hand to run against Don Sanders. We have to have a change as it relates to how we act across the city. I will use the office to point out our great opportunities. If we have fifty-six million dollars that's on net, if we have a quarter that needs to be built upon, we need something that takes place from there, now all of a sudden, we get to build a community that we all want. And we get to reimagine just as we've done. See, here's the thing. Here's what you have said in North Minneapolis over the past nine months. You created a map with some great ideas and great opportunities. We're not going to litigate the past, we're going to act to build for the future. And we're going to start with our infrastructure. We're living on a one-hundred-year grid. Our infrastructure is probably underneath us. So guess what the jobs are, right, our infrastructure? And how we're going to employ a good number of young men in the area, young women in the area, by allowing them to build up a community right before our eyes. They already have plans as it relates to, from our works, to do Plymouth as well as twenty-six, restructuring from literally the ground all the way up. That's infrastructure development and that's straight cash that we can actually take advantage of. Now, as we start to rebuild our infrastructure, we get more people engaged, we start growing that unemployment rate, which also involves that public safety issue. We start to expand our retail capabilities. Now all of a sudden, the Trader Joes, they want to come in, that's fine, but I'm with you as it relates to creating those rich opportunities. We have a great art community that is slowly building and they need a little bit of the influence as well. Those are our great opportunities. And again, it takes seven votes and the ability to be able to hatch our vision and to articulate a vision that we've all come together on already.
Andrew, question number fifteen, building food justice. How will you, as an elected official, plan to change your food system, i.e. community gardens, corner stores, ethnic and co-op grocery stores in North Minneapolis in a way that builds both health and well for our current residents? Please provide examples or a specific plan you have developed. Can you have two minutes for this question?
Do you mind if we skip that? I feel like we all answered. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Housing and Community Development, number eight. Despite various numerous housing and community development investments in North Minneapolis over the past ten years, North Minneapolis still lags behind in balancing the city in several areas. A: In your opinion, what has worked? B: What is your theory of change with North Minneapolis? How would you achieve implementation of it and how would you find it?
Thank you. Quality of affordable housing in North Minneapolis is a must. We have to create housing options for everyone from all walks of life. And I'm going to be a strong advocate for good quality of affordable housing here. That means single-family homes, multifamily homes, apartment buildings, townhomes, condos, all that stuff in North Minneapolis. Because in the next twenty years, the plan for our city is growth density here. And we have a lot of smart people who know housing here and I plan to draw on their experiences to build affordable housing here for everybody. We have to be mindful of the fact that transit's going to happen here in the next ten to twenty years and we have to be mindful of this, that we don't displace our poor residents who live here and have lived here for a long time. And we need to be mindful of that just because we don't want this place just to be a place for the middle class, for the upper class. We need this place to be a place for people from all walks of life, from various backgrounds. And I intend to keep a good eye on that so that we're mindful of that always. It's important to me that we have a good mix of people who live here in our border. To me, one of the big issues that has happened here on the north side is this foreclosure problem that has just been hugely detrimental to a lot of people. And before that, we had flipping as an issue, before that we had all these other issues. And I think at some point, our government really needs to step in and to stop these things from happening. And however we do it, we need to think about the taxpayers that are living here and if we want to create opportunities for people to own homes, we need to possibly be a landlord in home homes and help in that process so that everybody gets a home. I think that's the most important part because what we see here is that it's not a money issue, it's a credit issue. People can't borrow money. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dan and Allison.
You know, what's interesting to me is I've worked on the north side of the landlord attorney the last few years. And what I found disturbing is a number of people that have come to my office about landlord issue. And at the end of the day, it all came down to housing. A lot of times it came down, it came down to different points, but it came down to housing. Because, for example, they had four housing choices to a bad landlord. Or, and I talked to one of the landlords once, it was actually the most disturbing conversation I've ever had. The guy was involved in his church, he was, you know, he looked at himself as a really noble, decent guy. I said, well, you know, your window of the house fell out. It just fell right out of the house. The kid hit the window and it literally fell out of the house. He goes, oh, well, you know, I, we just had that fix. And I said, well, who do we hire for it? It's that racist guy. But, you know, people down there, that's how they live. Jeez, that's how they live. That is the most disturbing thing I heard from anyone. And the north side, there aren't a lot of housing choices. I mean, Glenn's completely right. If, you know, any of us, I think, were elected, want to push for more affordable housing, but also more mixed-use housing. We have Chris Brogan right here, who I've talked about on this issue quite extensively. And right now, there aren't a lot of housing choices for people. And so, so just in terms of what has and hasn't worked in the last ten years, I'd say the free market is something that we need to be aware of and we need to encourage. And quite honestly, I find that we haven't encouraged when the landlord has access to these houses. I think nonprofits play a role, but I also think we don't encourage homeowners to own homes and we don't encourage the development of housing, decent quality housing, for people who want to live in, be it apartments or be it single-family homes. That's one thing I really like to encourage in the next council.
Thank you, Mr. Allison and Mr. Brett.
Some things have worked, a lot has not. The, we were ready, there was a crime that took place. The issue of Redline has been going on for quite some time. The flipping, the recession. And then basically, just, we got hit with a tornado on top of everything else and we were not prepared for it and we have not actually taken care of some of our homes. We just have a bad plan as it relates to housing and stabilizing families. Time Magazine went out a couple of months ago, maybe a couple of years ago, about the instability of a lot of our families, which again, hits a lot of the issues of public safety, but also the educational achievement for our kids and many other things. What we're going to have to do is push this theory of equity. But also, we're going to stabilize and connect and grow by providing good quality housing options and also good opportunities for people to live and work in their area. That's how we start to stabilize the situation for all families. We start to commit our fate to everybody else's fate, to ensure that the necessary resources are there. So we're going to go with this equity fund. If we are creating funds to build stadiums, we need to create a fund to rebuild our communities. And that's where we begin in this conversation. We depleted our housing fund, which allowed us to stabilize a lot of our activities over the past ten years. But that was taken away in order to deal with the budget. I agree with Keith Ellison, a budget is a war document. And when we start talking about things such as taking away our housing funds or taking away economic development or transportation issues, then what does that say about our city? So we're not going to allow that to happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Brett and Mr. Kelsey.
Well, some of the stuff that has worked before is that city employees have usually got, when they work for the city of Minneapolis, they have to live in the city of Minneapolis. So getting somebody that was city residents to come back and make them live in the city is one thing. Incentives have also worked. Offering people, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars to help fix a roof and some other things if they stay over ten years, it's forgiven on the interest that's been played off. The other thing that we need is good rentals, good solid rentals and good landlords that are taking care of the rentals. Something that we have to discuss in our community is how landlords have exploited folks for rental fees. So Section Eight, when you think about it, you know, you can get a lot of money, you can get most of your money from Section Eight, like three bedroom bathroom, you get twelve hundred dollars more. Now, other renters that are not on Section Eight, maybe just on public housing or just want to rent a house, you know, they can't afford that. The market rate is not at that rate, you know, it's more around eight, nine hundred dollars at most. So we've got a lot of the playing field so everybody can rent here and they just don't exploit Section Eight renting because they also have to pay more. The things that we need to change or the theory of change that needs to happen is good schools, good shopping, good food, good policing, solid jobs, and stop the housing discrimination and mortgage losses.
Thank you very much. Here's our question and answer, the segment in tonight's program. We will have the candidate's closing statement. You guys will allow us two minutes to address the crowd. So if you want to pick your mic up, I'm going to walk around and talk before it's armed and welcome. And we will start with the Minneapolis family.
I'm not really much for flailing. Thought they'd get a few more laughs. Jeez, tough crowd. I just wanted to thank you all for being here. I mean, sincerely, it's good to see friends and neighbors at these things. And I think it's good that we all got to discuss within the limited time that we had a number of issues and I'm glad that a lot of these will be posted online so you can read our responses. I love the north side. I wasn't born in the north side, but I moved to the north side years ago and I fell in love with this place. And I'm completely honest when I say the people are what makes the north side great. I want to see a different type of north side. I want to see a north side that people think about and don't think about crime, but they think about the opportunities that are here. One half of West Broadway is owned by the city of Minneapolis. I think a third is limited to the city and then another third is owned by AMH. You have an opportunity for Glenwood like you've never seen before. And I want to make sure that when this development does come, that we build good quality structures and we don't just build things for safety, we build them because something has to be done for the north side. We need to have a plan, someone, we need to have a vision. I believe I have the right type of background, experience, and ability to get things done. I have had a good experience with this campaign so far and I think everyone's running respectfully race and I look forward to knocking on corridors and getting to know you over the next few months. I ask that you consider making me your first choice, but if not your first choice, at least your second. So I thank you very much for your time and I thank you for being here and seeing you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison and Mr. Brett.
You know, this campaign has been quite a beautiful one. It's something that's a life on the north side and to see the promise that's before us, to see the opportunities that a community connected come together, not just North Minneapolis, but Minneapolis, to create one Minneapolis, is an amazing opportunity that we all hold. We've had a great opportunity to see each and every one, each and every one of y'all here, but thousands of Northsiders over the past ten months. We've endured a lot. Northside is breathtaking. You think about what's gone on over the past ten years alone, or even the past five years, and we're still here, strong. But the question is, is where we're going next? Do we have a vision? Do we have the collective will? And do we have the ability to connect with our other friends, foster community, to build that community, that city that we all deserve? That we're not supposed to face on South Minneapolis, same things are happening in North Minneapolis? That the opportunities for those great facilities that we're talking about, great amenities that take place, will start to sprout up in North Minneapolis? Or let me just say, Minneapolis? Because we're one Minneapolis. I'm going to fight hard. I'm a Democrat, but I'm a Northsider first. I ain't going to a tornado spot. And y'all saw, y'all saw the move. But we made it up here. We get run, we start to fight. That's what Northsiders do. I'm able to articulate that message to all three thousand residents. It's time to move forward. What's happened is happened. Start moving forward together.
You know, since I stood up and led the initiative last time, I'll sit down and take a seat, alright? Well, folks, I'm a fighter. I don't think the status quo, but I don't think that's a win in City Hall right now. Don't vote for me because I knocked on your door first, or that I knew you first, or that I'm a great part of you, or that I gave you a great shirt to represent me. Vote for me because you believe in what I can do down in City Hall and how I can hold people accountable that are in office today. I'm physically responsible. I haven't spent fifty thousand dollars on this race. I haven't spent thirty thousand, I haven't spent twenty thousand. I haven't accepted any money from big businesses. The only money I have taken, or I haven't accepted money from unions either, the only money I have taken is from people like you. I'm a white man. I'm going to put the north side before I put politics. I don't know if everybody up here can say that right now. I've already helped create jobs. I ordered my signs from a sign on Lowry and Linn. I wasn't forced to go to St. Paul or no Northsiders I worked with were in my signs. That guy lives in the fifth ward and I was proud to support him and his family. My real friends who are on twelve hundred dollars, I think we're doing great for twelve hundred dollars. And I'm not looking to raise ten thousand dollars. Every person on my staff works for free, they volunteer. I don't pay nobody on my staff. Everybody volunteers, including my campaign manager. I have integrity. North Minneapolis is led by the DFL for long enough. Give me four years, people, just give me four years. Check the Green Party's values on our platform, but not far off from the DFL. We're just not tied into all the stuff that DFL is. And I think right now, that's what North Minneapolis needs. A man with integrity, a man who's going to fight for you guys, and a man who's physically responsible as well. My name is Kaylee Sanderson and I'm going to have your first call November fifth. Thank you.
I'm not going to attack anybody now, I'm just going to focus on myself here. I'm a husband, a father, and a neighbor who wants to do good for all of you. I've lived here for over a dozen years and my commitment is here on the north side. I'm running for city council because I believe that our board deserves more and our residents deserve better. Our neighborhoods must be safe. We must create the conditions for economic development to be successful and lasting and we must make sure that our residents are hired for that development. We must continue to support the Civil Rights Department because wherever the Civil Rights Department goes, so goes us. We must build and preserve housing that can accommodate the needs of diverse residents from all walks of life. I want to be your city council member. I'm qualified and ready to serve you. I will be a fierce advocate on the city council because I care deeply about the future of this board. I will work tirelessly to advocate for you to improve your life. In a couple of days, you're gonna see these things come into your doors. We spent some money on this, but we wanna get our message heard. These are the top ten reasons why I'm running. And I would just point out that, for myself, number one is the most important one, which is, I wanna be all of the reasons above and more for all of you, because you deserve it, I'm gonna work my butt off. I'm not gonna use the other word right now, work my butt off, to win, to work for you, because it matters that much. And anybody who criticizes how much I spend, or how much any of the other candidates spend, I'm gonna tell you this, everybody here should wanna win. And if you wanna spend your money, good for you, because that just means you care about this community. I'm gonna spend money to win, it's, it's important for all of us that we get to fight for this. That's me, thank you.